I tried to get on Zoom and download the last meeting. And I couldn't get on there, except that the credentials have changed.
Oh, yeah. I changed it from dot com to dot. Hey, Jamie. Jamie. Oh, you got her going. Good. Okay.
That is the total. Okay, so I think we're gonna go with. But this will get off the list. But he said this could change the total. Put some water on that.
Damn, he just showed up.
Like I said, we can also fix.
Are you behind goodbye stuff?
Yeah.
Did you hear from him?
No, not yet. Yeah, that way I can keep everything like this. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Jamie, did you turn the volume up on that?
You basically had to turn it down.
We're gonna buy that shirt.
I get.
No, I love it. I'm jealous.
Awesome, right? Got my World War II planes on it and Hawaiian style. So, yeah, I love it.
Are you in Hawaii?
I am not, no, but I did buy it in Hawaii.
You make that pay on the.
Thanks.
He talked to me about that.
That's fine. So just as I can't see anything, so nobody else on there.
Yeah, since Givern up there, it looks like you may have your.
This is any different than it was before.
Yeah, right. It says start video. Yeah, that'll do it. You gotta make that. Very bottom. Yeah.
There aren't you.
It says start a video with a light. You're ready. Keep going. Keep going.
Next one more.
Now you have to look at it. Everything you want to or not.
All right. Yep, I can see you.
Whether you want to or not.
I have done that earlier.
You gotta figure it out. Looks like. Now it's hard. All right, we're getting started. Please stand for plenty. I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which fans, one nation, on the God, and with the love, the liberty, and the freedom. Hey, welcome to the meeting. January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, Givern Town Council meeting. When I call attendance, please say if you're here in person or on Zoom. How does that sound? Perfect. Any person. That's not right. Hello, Justin.
First. I didn't break up.
Kevin Johnson. I'm here in person. John Spinks, here in person. Brett Galvin, President. Randy Deppard, President. Do I answer?
I said in person.
And brother. Right last one. Private, personal. Josh Noel, present in person. Danny is left.
In person.
Okay. All right, I want to start. With a little bit of. Those things I like to read. Congressman Mervan is pleased to share the allocation of approximately 1.3 million to the United States Army Corps of Engineers through fiscal year 2023 Section 219 program. To propose to pursue a partnership with the town of Givern. The federal funding to support the snake last water main system improvements will prove beneficial to the residents living in this area of Givern and will continue to and will contribute to the overall improvement to the quality of life in place now. This project entails an instruction for the replacement of four inch cap in people upfield water main with new six inch and eight inch PVT water main pipe. Congressman Mervan is happy to have this opportunity to work with Givern and the Army Corps of Engineers to bring this project to fruition. We are working together to initiate a private pick-up meeting to discuss responsibility of private partners and walk through the section two nineteen project process. This is a pretty big deal here, folks. I'd like to thank Mary Jane, Randy, Jamie, John Gorges. We've put a lot of hours in on this and among other things. And we'd also need to thank Congressman Van. This is something we've needed to do for a long time. That's good. Good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, next is election of officers for twenty twenty three. President.
I'll make a motion for John Spinks as President.
Do I have a second?
Second, Justin.
Second by Justin. Okay, since this is a hybrid meeting, we have to do everything by roll call. Justin.
I.
I. Kevin.
I.
John.
I.
Now only. Okay.
Well, Dave, thank you for throwing it. I appreciate it. It's been over three years, and I believe a year before that, you've done a good job. Thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is that I'd like to move forward because I don't see in the minutes the reappointment of those fours. I was on, I was doing what Justin was doing last meeting, and I didn't see it. Did I overlook that?
Yes. The, it's on page three. Of the minutes, board appointments. It talks about plans, storm, BCA, and park board, and then also there are HRC appointments.
Oh, right. I was thinking there was another one that needed to be added. One of those things that the council already fixed is the secretary for recording minutes. And I don't know that we took action on that particular. So that's something that we have done with that. Do I have a nomination?
I don't have any. Do I answer? I will second.
Dave has made a motion. And then seconded, we will have to go roll call.
Governor.
Nay.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
Nay.
John, nay.
If I may ask, what is this recording secretary for?
This is not recording secretary. It's actual secretary, which is what's been approved all the time. This is a job that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. For what?
For the town council.
There is no secretary for the town council in the in the salary ordinance.
You're absolutely correct. The one in there is actually your position.
Yes, and I am the recorder. I am responsible for the recording secretary for the town council. It is in the state IC codes.
Absolutely. You expect with your adopt position.
Yes.
Me and talk with you at workshop about appointing somebody different because it has been the tradition of the town to hire a or to appoint a secretary.
But I'll never appoint it. It was always at the strength of the term.
We would have to check into the minutes, which we have and it has been.
And when did, how far back did you go?
Well, I can only see the ones that are both nominated. So that's what we have done.
Well.
The year before we took office, and so it's our position. It is my position.
Well, I take the minutes, so you don't have to do that.
So then we will not appoint anybody. Jamie will take that. Okay.
Clarification if we can. Does it stand in here minutes or not stand in?
It's what's standing.
The not in the agents bucket boat.
Yeah, I believe it stands.
Thank you. Jamie, and if I'm understanding, I'm still recording for you, am I not?
Definitely.
Well, I normal position.
At the town hall, yes, and the tapes is incorrect, and I am also taping, so yes.
Okay. All right, that is the the information there. Now, our first thing is under old business and utility adjustment.
Why aren't we doing any other board nominations?
Well, thank you. Nice, President. Vice President, I apologize. So we do need to take a nomination for Vice President.
I will nominate Justin Allright as Vice President. Kevin.
Is there a second?
I will second that nomination. Todd.
Being a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
John, I say I. Motion passes. Fine. Okay, all other positions being filled. Is there, did we have, did I, we brought up the fact that we needed to reappoint you on the planning commission as well?
Yes, I believe I'm the employee appointment, so if you.
I don't think we've ever done that. We've always just let that arrive until we make a change.
I, I'm not sure. I'm just bringing it up that when you're making reappointment to where else, I didn't know if that position would be reappointed.
Okay. So that is a position of the council that we do not have to reappoint them?
That's my understanding, and that's what I agree with.
Yeah, okay, so then you're still, so I'm willing, okay, okay, so good to me. Okay, moving on to utility adjustments is, this is what.
Yeah, Maria.
Good. Mind standing up and telling us a little bit about what happened?
Um, we had a water bike burst underneath the house. Originally, the landlord thought that the water heater had just run out. So they originally fixed that, next day realized that still wasn't working, had to come back out for a third time, and they finally realized that it was piped that had burst underneath the house. Okay. They said they fixed it, but it went like three days without being fixed, where it was just raining.
And that is for the February bill, is that correct?
Um, the reading for her. And it just took with eleven thousand gallons. That's.
And that's more February, I guess.
Yes.
Everybody have any questions? Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to adjust the sewer porting of the building the last, the average of the last twelve months.
All right, there's a motion by Todd. Is there a second?
I'll second, Justin.
Justin, seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call. Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
My vote, I. Okay, it's good. If you can tomorrow, the next day, stop at the town hall and talk to the third president, and she will get you all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of the December town council meeting in the J. Twenty-three worship.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes, Justin.
Justin has made a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Dave's seconded. Justin made a motion. Dave's seconded. Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
And I vote I. No, this is better. All right, next is we have claims and accounts payable. We have three categories: total transfer and net. We have five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty-five cents in total. Under transfers, we have two hundred and ninety-two thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents. And we have two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and one cent equal hundred of the net. Both approve the document.
Yes, who did that?
Dave.
Second, Kevin.
Any discussion? Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
And I vote I. Next, we have ordinance two zero two three dash one dash one seven. This is a fund creation. Townkeeper is asked for ordinance establishing fund six one zero six six two zero six water development charge fund, wastewater development charge fund. Whereas the townkeeper recognizes that is required by the state board of accounts to establish separate accounts for any funds received and whereas when said funds were received and received it in, it is necessary for the town court treasurer to have fund in which to play said money. And now therefore, being ordained by the town council here out of Givern, work on Indiana, that the Givern court treasurer be that hereby is directed to establish a six one zero six water system development charge fund, six two zero big wastewater development charge fund. This fund, for those of you who are unaware of it, we will be, as houses are built, there is a development charge that comes in in order to pay expenses totally for future development, so we have asked that this fund be established so that we can collect this money separately. So I have a moment to approve this order.
Can I make a a correction? You said twenty twenty-three dash one dash seventeen dash one. It's just seventeen. Twenty-three, one, seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Kevin.
Is there a second?
Second, Todd.
Any discussion? Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
And I vote I. Motion passes. Fine. The next is our salary ordinance. The totality credit requirement that I read this in power was. So we are looking for to pass the, excuse me, ordinance somewhere P two zero two three dash one dash seventeen dash one salary. This is the town given twenty twenty-three salary. It's effective January first, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Todd.
Second, Justin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got you. Thank you, Justin. Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
I vote I.
Okay, I'm going to, I was talking to Brad. Who made the motion?
Todd. Justin, second. Second.
That's okay.
And just wanted to confirm that this will retroact back to the first.
Back to January first, Jess.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Absolutely. It's reflective of the the increases to the to the employees. We're doing our very best to make sure that they are appreciated and that they continue to work in the capacities in which they're already employed. But thank you all.
You.
Well. Next is resolution two zero two three dash one dash one seven. This is the transfer list.
Okay, this probably should have been the old one. The one I went back to the seventeen. I'm sorry. I turned with the same number. I didn't realize.
So then what, you'd like?
No, this is a revolution. The others, yes.
Um, oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
So we're good. So this is a revolution providing for the transfer appropriations for the town here in Port County, Indiana for the future for twenty twenty-three for the action and passage by the Givern Town Council pursuant to IC six dash one point one dash one eight dash six. Whereas certain extraordinary conditions result, since the adoption of the existing annual budget for the year twenty twenty-three, it is now necessary to transfer appropriations into different plans that will be appropriated from the annual budget, the various functions, the department, to be the emergency. Section one, being ordained that the town council, the town here in Port County, Indiana, for the expenses of the general fund, the following appropriations are hereby transferred and set apart out of the funds hereafter named for the purposes specified by subject laws governing the same. Such such here is transferred and left otherwise stipulated by law. Where it had been shown that existing appropriations have unallegated ounces which will be available for transferring as follows. General from one one zero one zero zero three three two four general slash police travel of a hundred dollars to on one one zero one zero zero three three nine zero general police dues and subs hundred dollars. So it's a transfer from one to the other. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Dave.
Is there a second?
Second, Todd.
Any discussions? Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
And I vote I. Moving on now to new business. We have the over wastewater collection system grant invitation for bid. We have somebody to speak on that.
Mary Jane.
Mary Jane. Okay. I'd like to introduce Mary Jane Thomas and Thomas and Associates. Your good, where you at? Let's slide a scene.
Asking the council to review the invitation for bid for the wastewater collection system. It is the skipping lighting and manhole priority one, priority two updates. The invitation to bid, if you approve it tonight, is a standard Oprah invitation to bid. It would be advertised the twentieth of January the sixth of February. We would have a pre-bid meeting on the fourteenth of February, and we would open bids publicly on the twenty-first of February. Thereafter, the open biz would be referred to John Gorges, who is a highly of the engineer on the project. You can answer some requests about that process. He would review, his team would review the bids, and they come back to you with a recommendation for selection.
Randy, is this this pilot? Yeah, so it was sent to us. Okay, Josh, do you have anything that you needed ahead?
Uh, now unless you have any questions about the project.
So then what do you need us to do for this meeting? Approve, is it provided, approve against?
Motion to approve, Dave.
Second, Justin.
Any discussion? Any questions? Kevin.
I.
Dave.
I.
Todd.
I.
Justin.
I.
And I vote I. In the past, we had approved Dave to be able to sign paperwork. Is that something that we need to do again?
Yes. So the way it reads is that the town council president in the resolution that we adopted to receive the grant, the town council president is the signature right on the deck.
Okay, is Dave's name on that or is it just the position?
Position.
Solution. All right. Anything else we need to do this? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the community process. Grant.
You. Yeah, I handed out the give it's gonna like the separate, you know, I gave you some promo locker and numbers last week. These are updated with a few additions. Justin, do you retain her? Um, Jonathan, do you retain her?
It was, it's hard to hear you. Say that again?
Did you receive, I think you email uh about Bernie Meskellis thought for baby?
No, I didn't. Uh, I didn't get the email. I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, they're not much different than the previous. Uh, the addition here on this is Norbeck. The first number on the front page of the first uh group. The total price of five hundred eighty-five, two ninety-seven, local map one forty-six. Uh, that would do all the projects listed above, above. And that twenty would be four hundred thirty-eight thousand nine seventy-two. Uh, and we were lucky enough to do all of Norbeck, which is out of our budget range. Thanks, I don't remember. Um, so I would ask the board approval. You, you know, the first option, a local map of one hundred forty-six thousand three point four point six. That's reviewed the back of the quarter. Uh, from round two, the Colosseum, four block from Butterworth, Parrot Court. Beverly Drive from Ryan Road, the verge, Jackson from State Road two to Adam Street. And Norway from round eighteen, Van Circle with the two hundred thousand dollar uh stormwater improvement provision. And that.
So do we approve this entire thing here, Randy, or do we just approve the the town portion?
The entire.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve it? I'm making a motion to approve uh after one. Kevin? Is there a second?
Second, basically.
Any questions? Any comments? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Uh, hi. Justin?
I'll abstain only because I am unable to review.
I vote aye. Motion passes for oh one. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Mr. Price, I believe you're here. You're one of the uh, well, you're a new business owner, a new property owner at this particular point. Is that correct?
Okay.
And uh, from what I understand, we have an issue of some old flats and whose property lies on British Drive.
Yes.
And what is it that you're asking the town commander?
So by the term we own the alley.
I'm gonna pass out a application.
This, I do believe we have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
So essentially what's happening here, right, is it's part of your property, part of the building is actually odd town property. And part of your property is actually the northern of the alley, correct?
Yes. So the two lots are are of the alley.
Okay.
One, one lot takes up the whole alley, all the way toward the tarred apartments.
Okay.
And then the next lot over takes a third of it. And then the town owns the grass behind me.
Okay, so if you're removing the land, so that you can go ahead and start to develop your piece of property, is that correct?
Yes. Sorry, I can't block your alley.
We definitely have to do that. Brad, did you review all of this?
We've looked at it. I've been in touch with their agent, Kim Sut, as well with this all things known the open up. There's a few steps for requirements, uh you know, as far as the, you could do it by resolution. Randy Commission, please take a look at it.
Brandon? Randy, is, have you taken that out? You got an opportunity to look at this?
Yes, Mark, you told you.
Well, Brandon, you're, okay. Uh, so then what you recommend for us to do then is to send this back and find a commission to take a look at it.
Yeah, and even a tech, I would suggest a tech meeting. Just, I mean, Randy's already given his input on it, but I don't see anybody in the council have any opinion about tech? I don't know, is this tech necessary?
Well, it's an old piece of property, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would be good, you would tag on it with the recommendation. I mean, something we could just look at and you know, it's a may. May or may not, so.
Because it's not going to affect if the drainage branch doesn't change, right?
Hmm.
Uh, does it block the fire department in any way, shape, or form? No. For water, do you have any opinion on it? Right?
It needs a picture right now, so I have no opinion to this.
Well, you're part of tax. Would you like to see it go to tax or?
Not necessarily, because uh somebody, normally the cross can work like this. Okay, if all the apartments sign off on, I'm good. Normally, the property owner is the one who would request staff, so we could give them direction, but I think you are recast in direction and all of a sudden you can turn.
And it actually was free house space, right, for the, for the town to remove it all, the property that is closer to the uh, to the fire department and to the parking and all those types.
Yeah.
So what do we want to do?
If we have the authority to approve it, it's not we send it to planning, what is the future?
Okay, well, I think I would suggest that planning base look at it quickly uh and go from there. At least planning, if you got it right, right?
I agree.
Senator?
In the meantime, since you're at, you'll have to keep it low.
All right, so then we're just sending it for the planning, is that correct? Yes. Okay. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Hopefully, we can uh, we can move through this rather quickly. But loaned it out, I know you own some of this property for what now, here or there?
Not buying.
Some of that, yeah.
Nothing.
Are you, what are you gonna put in? A lot of pizza, pizza joy? What happened?
Why are you having a piss right now?
Oh, that's right.
Mr. President, do you want to vote on this to preserve the record and send it to a planning commission?
Sure.
Uh, do I have a motion to send the the price information down, the request down the plan?
So move to Todd.
Second that, Justin.
Any discussion? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Todd?
I.
Justin?
I.
I vote aye. Sarah, would you put that? I didn't see there. All right, I was looking for you over there. Would you mind putting that on the planning commission agenda for the next time? And for the prices, so that you're aware, we need on the, the fighting commission needs on the second Tuesday of every month, okay?
Okay.
And then they will look at it, they will decide if they're gonna act on it. And then they would obviously probably, if they approved it, recommend it to come back to us. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we have a promotion today. Should you go up?
Yes, it's my recommendation, a pleasure to present to the board, a recommendation for Brandon Swinney to be promoted to the rank of corporal, which I believe should be reestablished in the salary ordinance.
It is.
Um, Brandon brings a number of years of experience to uh law enforcement here. Um, before coming to Hebron, we uh served at the uh Bell Braco University Police Department, and before that, the Brown County Sheriff's Department in Indiana here. I, I think he'd be excellent position and uh he'd definitely be uh advancing some other kind of leadership department to make advantage of this.
I'll say. Do I have a motion to promote Brandon Swinney to the position of corporal?
Motion to approve?
And I'll second.
Second, Justin.
They seconded. Any discussion? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Todd?
I.
Justin?
I.
I. I vote aye. Congratulations, congratulations.
Congrats.
I'll get you your badge over to you toward the uh this year.
Okay, we have a blossom contractor working invoice here for the amount of three thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Dave, would you mind kind of explain the total of this?
We've already paid the bill in December. Um I apparently after they got our uh check, they discovered that they had billed us correctly. And uh Matt Kaiser called me and wanted to know if I had closed out our um TCMG grant and considered me to just pay the bill. I did not have the, the uh check back yet. So unfortunately, we have to pay this. If we had already closed out our grant, we would not have had to pay this. They would maybe eat it. So uh, they just, you know, asked if we could pay this.
And what was it, ordinance?
It says on it, it's a pipe removal.
Pipe.
I believe it says that on the endless.
Uh, wait, okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Kevin.
Is there a second?
Second.
David?
Any discussion? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Todd?
I.
Justin?
I.
I vote aye. Motion passes, but. All right, Mr. President, yes, sir, you have a question.
Before we go to the um meetings or the departments, uh did you guys want me to redo the cumulative capital development uh fund to get it, to bring it back up to four percent because it would have to be a game scene, we had to have a public hearing that's to be posted in the paper.
And this is the one where we generally use it half the government police.
Half the wireless.
I do.
Can we, can you do a motion for that, please?
Sure.
And what's the name of that one again?
Cumulative capital development.
So CCD fund. All right, is there a motion to increase CCD five up to point zero four?
So move, Dave.
I'm second, Justin.
Justin, second, any discussion? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Todd?
I.
Justin?
I.
And I vote aye. We also had a something table from the one, do we have a table for last name? We deal with Susan Elliott, did I get that?
I got it too.
Okay, uh, while being able to keep her in there. So we're gonna have to take some type of action on it since it was tabled, correct? Would you kind of explain?
Well, Susan is my uh go-to person. Uh, we paid her a hourly amount. And she is much, much cheaper than paying the living lady um or anybody else to, when I need help. Once again, uh, today I called um he's on, and it took him about four hours to get back to me. By the time they got back to me, I had figured it out. Um, but it's one of those things where it's nice to meet somebody you can call and it can be taken care of. And, you know, it took me about an hour to figure out what was going on, and by that time I was all hot and sweaty and, but I turned up the terrible. Fills up my diet, but it's nice to have somebody you can call for backup.
Considerably less expensive than other alternatives, right?
Yes.
And what is it that we would be paying her?
Twenty-eight dollars a minute.
I'll make a motion to rehire Susan Elliott as a part-time basis, correct?
Yeah.
At twenty dollars a minute.
That's when needed.
As needed.
I do have a question about, what is the total? What are we, what do we normally pay her per year?
Uh, this year it was around six thousand, which was forty-five hundred dollars last semester. So it just shows we're getting a little bit better what we do. But they change things all the time, and sometimes your changes don't make a whole lot of sense.
Is there a reasonable cap to put on this check?
That's up to you, Jim.
But for you, for real practical purposes, you're.
I don't, I don't know that I don't think we need to put a cap on it. I'm not, if I'm going to do, we have to use her excessively, I'm going to have to come to you anyway.
Well, if, if we were to prove it at twenty-eight dollars an hour, you could use it for as much as one rack.
Right.
Okay.
But I mean, we were down forty-five hundred dollars from what we spent last year. So, you know, like I said, we're getting better, better jobs, uh, asking less questions, but sometimes there's just things that don't make sense. Okay.
Can we cap it at seven dollars a year, and if you get to that, then you just come through with it?
Yes. Yeah, not a problem.
If that's okay with.
Would you like to mentor?
Sure, uh, I'll make a motion to uh rehire Susan Elliott at twenty-eight dollars per hour on a part-time, as-needed basis with a cap of seven thousand dollars.
And she would receive any benefit, right?
No, she's just the candidate.
Okay. So Dave, you have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Justin.
Any other, any further discussion? Kevin?
I.
Dave?
I.
Todd?
I.
Justin?
I.
I vote aye.
Okay, I have at the workshop, you talked about the thirty-four thousand that we were going to get from Mr. Reba for the development. You have a paper up there that I contacted um, figure of accounts, and that was their answer. Um, I'm gonna call it. But I I don't understand as you guys made the mention, this would be for a future, a future subdivision cost. What does the general fund pay for for future subdivision? I I don't, I don't know that I can do this. I'm just asking, because they're gonna ask me, and I gotta have an answer.
Uh, the paper that I have in front of me, again, which is, are these five, these three pieces better?
One, it's that long?
This one here?
Yes, that's what they're answering.
So this is for billing permit.
Well, that's what that is considered.
This is a billing permit fee when they come in and they deal with house.
That is for all permit fees for the building department.
Uh, for me, anyway, I would like an opportunity to redo this and then discuss it during workshop.
Okay, but I can't do a fund. I say no. I guess you're gonna explain to me what you're gonna use it for.
We don't know. So we, what we would ask for you to look into was to find out what type of fund we could put the building permits as they came in, those fees.
That's what the answer.
But then I had an opportunity to just look at it.
Okay.
Be through, so I'd like an opportunity to review that, let's just be purring, and then make a decision. So the answer required them. We are looking for a fund where all of these permits can be put into these, the fees. And then we can decide what needs to be done with it at that time, as opposed to putting it into the general fund and it being used for whatever.
To pay rent and all of this.
Could be all said and done.
Well, that will tell you what the billing fees are for.
Well, I, I get it, I get it.
And when you say, as you said, well, the general fund can just pay for it, part of the revenue for the general fund is from billing department fees.
Sure.
You know, permits, um, licenses, all that goes into that and it pays. So.
But we're just talking about the fees that are coming directly from the new developments, not the normal everyday permits, just just the ones that are coming out of the actual developments.
Okay, I, like I said, that says there Percy said, there is no other funds. So I'm gonna have to ask them if we can make one. I don't know, because we have to do what they say.
Oh, without a doubt. That's what we did at that workshop, was for you to look into that and find it out, and then we can have a discussion.
So what is the purpose of keeping those ones separate from normal building permit fees?
Uh, for me, this is to be able to see, uh, since this is our first development in twenty-six or twenty-seven years, to see what could possibly come up uh as we go through the process. We already have budgeted uh to pay for Brad in the general fund, right?
Yeah.
Out of seed.
Once in, seed is just, it's not his pay. It's uh, I think it's his insurance, but um okay, I, I just, they're gonna ask what you're gonna want to use it for. The uh money we got for the inspection fee, uh, we are paying Mr. Lot and Back Kiss three thousand seven hundred dollars, and the rest went to HWC for the inspection fees for the subdivision. Because I had asked if that, it was for inspection fees, and I asked, and you said yes.
We will, uh, I guess we will discuss that a little more in workshop, once we have. We will, uh I guess we will discuss that a little more in workshop once we have a, have a solid answer and opportunity to review. Any question about that? Okay. Anything else under your business or role business?
Um I have a question. Apparently at the last, the whatever you guys called uh get togethers that you have about the subdivision, there was a statement made by Matt Reardon. He believed that whatever has to do with the water and sewer departments, that the developer will take care of the water and the town will take care of the sewer. That's not how that works.
We're way ahead of the game. We're, we're, we're way ahead of whoever those discussions wrap. I'm not aware of any of us that were at that particular meeting, so I can't comment on what Matt Reardon did. Uh and we're still in that, the HRC is still in negotiations with the government, but.
Well, this is for the subdivision that they're creating in right now.
We're gonna, let us, let us, let us work through that process. Those were meetings that I heard about just today, so. The details of which I can't talk about. Anybody else?
I heard it.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the department reports. Paul, you're up.
All right, um two have done to the North Water Power. Uh we knew it was somewhat of a gamble, raised a lot of things on site twice throughout. We've got thirteen thousand four hundred dollars invested in and has multiple leaks again. We have yet to be able to fill it. Um but as Wes or you say, look at, I think it was a point now where we're gonna stop trying to fix that power. We knew it was suspect again, we just thought it would be worthwhile to attempt. Um so right now is the stance that I got. I think that was, we got a meeting Friday to have a little talk about it. Today we were able to replace hundred fifty foot of uh six inch between well four and well six. I talked about that workshop. We have multiple man breaks on that. Uh that project could be completed. One of these hooked up, we just gotta backfill and clean up. This Thursday at one o'clock, uh we do have a meeting with the weather team and the developer in regards to upgrading the uh Hertz bank and go to wastewater plant with the windy hill. So we'll work through some numbers on that. And then Friday, don't know what time yet, we have a meeting uh regarding the numbers for the water plant. I did receive those from Mike today, having the chance to pass them on. And I probably will not pass them on until we have our meeting Friday, once we get our numbers and I get certification. All the tasks goes on. Um what time are they? Thursday at one and Friday on a security, three Friday morning. If you don't time that down.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, three Friday morning. Yeah, it can be online.
Well, they're gonna be online.
Uh Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday on site, four o'clock, four twenty-five. Um that's all I had. Other thing, uh the man grant, um I know it wasn't on purpose, but I did want to big Bob finding uh because he was huge on bookers together. Uh I have been on vacation, going on vacation the day that I lived by that grant until Bob uh one of them beyond that for hours, making matches up, so. Um so it's a huge one to work and start it now, going to hear the Bobby Cole pattern back.
That's Bob. Uh when it comes to these meetings, I think we talked about it, we're gonna try to see if we can move those to three fifteen or so. Is there at the liaison, if there are times that work well that you can make it work. Three fifteen would be fine. Okay. Maybe not these two, although we can adjust those, but moving on to the future.
Okay.
Anything else, man? That's it. Okay. Anything from? Chief, go up.
Uh before I go into my normal report, I have one other matter for the board's consideration, concerning vehicle purchases. You know, discussed at the LA workshop meeting. Um at that time, I reached out to Marl Brothers Ford in Illinois uh and I got the Illinois state bid pricing on vehicles. Reason for reaching out to Illinois, there were no other Indiana orders accepted by Indiana for vehicle trips. Uh the price that Marl Brothers gave me at the Illinois state bid price was forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five thou- one more time, please. Forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Little sticker shot goes almost uh, almost exactly ten thousand dollars. Ever will be paid for a similar vehicle last year. Um but the problem is um for selling these vehicles, it makes you different. So I, I'd either take a little advantage of this supply and demand situation. Um we discussed going ahead, probably the purchase uh to be paid for out of the free CCD and CED funds and asking um the town for an additional ten thousand dollars um to offset the inflation cost we didn't have for CDs. Since that time, um we've been contacted by um Bloomington Ford Lincoln dealership in Bloomington, you know, the Indiana state there. They're not accepting any orders for future foreign purchases, but they didn't uh inform us that they had a vehicle matching our specifications. Um that was canceled by another police department and they're holding it for twenty-four hours for us if we want this vehicle. The price for this vehicle is forty-five thousand seventy-two dollars, so roughly an eighty percent savings. Um and the vehicle we could take delivery at much sooner. Given the uh, I'm sorry, given the state, um it's not something I wanna do, but it's a rapidly fluctuating market, there are vehicles and money that are available. Like to recommend react on this vehicle.
Jamie, do we have the funds for this?
I'm sure I can find the ten thousand dollars. I still haven't rolled over. I don't have all my statements. The stuff that normally doesn't happen until February.
Is it something then that you would recommend that we do?
Gentlemen, this is not my call of choice.
No, but I'm saying about the.
I'm, I'm not, that's up to you. I if that's the it's lower than the other. And like I says, I'm sure I can find ten thousand for the vehicle.
Okay.
And we apologize for the timing. Um they never seem to work out well for us.
Again, we'll also need another roughly ten thousand dollars for equipment?
Yes, um the worst comes to worst, we could pay for that ten thousand out of the police equipment fund that we already have the money in. And um should the board approve the purchase of this vehicle, I would request permission to start the process of decommissioning uh the two thousand fifteen board explorer and the process of taking silent data options to sell that vehicle off.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Would it be cheaper to um you know, uh train again like everybody else?
Uh the trade could be beginning good. Usually the dealerships don't wanna deal with trades, especially these dealerships that are dealing with the state bidding price. Historically, these have been like auctioning off the vehicles.
Justin, what do you suggest? As a police leader?
You know, I, I know that Josh has been looking around the state and trying to find any other option to try to make this just any more economical and he is, uh he's been coming up short at any time. Um you know, I, I using the other vehicle as a trade is something that I don't think me and him have discussed, but past that, I think we should move on purchasing the vehicle right away.
Is the trading something you could discuss with the dealership to?
Yes.
And whatever you think is about.
Yes, we can ask. Uh one, one thing, just for the public's information, a lot of times trainings have benefits about selling your vehicle due to the tax savings on your vehicle, but now there's a pay taxes, so we would, we would incur this tax, like definitely inquire and um we can try to get the best deal.
Yeah, let's check into that. But yeah, I think we should move on trying to um get this vehicle as soon as possible since it is, you know, a tough market out there.
Ranger, you can have the same control of buying trucks?
I, I have been looking as well. It's uh very, very difficult. It's a judge and be unique spot where he's got twenty-four hours. It's kind of what I had as a power truck. So as I'm thinking out loud, I might, I might come next four B and just get pre-approved because sometimes you don't have the time uh to just, you're out on the side of the location, but you might not have that time. So it, it's a weird market, man. It makes her down very, very difficult. Um I learned I did find a couple trucks. But uh I, I'm in a different spot. I gotta wait till May because of the following season, I can't get rid of the truck, bring a truck in, so um and to your question, it's very difficult, but there's a timing issue, we'll be, I gotta wait for one.
And this is gonna be an explorer?
Yes. Um we did in desperation look out to Dodges, according to the Durangos, um within it. The Durangos are coming to arrive at about forty-three thousand dollars, so it's only about a two thousand dollar savings and multiple sources, including the chief of demand. Who, who, who knows who's willing and scoring these purposes.
Or at least upgrade to a much thicker hood, I think.
Yeah. I don't wanna turn into a board versus us to debate, or we go one against.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Justin, that we uh we approve the of a new um police uh vehicle.
Jesse, can you repeat that again, please?
Sorry, I'll make the uh, I'll make a motion that um we authorize the PD to move on acquiring the new police vehicle.
Is there a second?
Second, Governor.
Any discussion? Does that motion do what you needed to do, Jamie, in order to be able to buy that down? All that, okay, I'm standing. Governor?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. I will reach out to the UIC tomorrow to see about uh trading prices and I'll send an email once I get those numbers and recommendation. We might get out of, we might get an auction. Uh I'm going into my report now. Um we wrapped up in your statistics, uh twenty twenty-two year um for the entire year, the climate has answered one that are, answered one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five calls of service. Um that's up from one thousand four hundred and twenty-three calls of service from twenty-one. They conducted one thousand six hundred and eighty-six traffic stops, up from one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine to twenty-one. And uh I agree those numbers were a bit higher, but as you told, then people crunched, that we had to cut back on some patrol and uh that had impact and so initiated actually.
Would you briefly explain the, the different, two different categories?
Uh from traffic stops to calls of service?
Yeah, so calls of services.
Calls of service is basically kind of picks up the phone and calls and anyone just that center uh for any type of key service, uh being it's a suspicious vehicle. Disturbance, basically you can have those uh activity requires a police response.
Okay.
Like certain traffic stops, people themselves, if my office results out, like this is a distraction, that's a traffic style. Out of those two numbers, um the police department for twenty twenty-two issued six hundred and twenty-two citations, one hundred and two misdemeanor arrest charges and twenty-nine twelve charges. The board has the breakdown for both the month of December and the year in total of what the call of service were. After that, you have my municipal reports, uh nothing out of the ordinary event. When you have like this kind of thing, break them. That concludes my report. This report has something to do.
You're, you're getting rid of the fifteenth floor?
It's the oldest one in the fleet.
Okay, I see that the fifteen and four has more miles.
We do, um mileage doesn't typically affect us in a small town is bad, is idle out. I allow us, but typically, um have a lot of wear and tear on what police vehicles.
Do they have auto meters on?
Yeah. I believe if they do, but I, I'm not a car guy, so um I, I know the fifteen is uh for maintenance purposes and impugns most of the shoes.
Thanks. Anything else? All right, uh Chad is not here. I don't believe there's any other representative, but I apologize. Todd, do you have any?
Um I do. He mentioned that he is not going to be here nor give a report until uh the differences are settled.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Park Department?
Um nothing going on at Park Friday, other than we are, we have the vacancy on board. Um as a member of the resigned. So we teleposted a notice there's an opening and application, but I think we got one. So we're in wait and see how we're able to get any more. Under the last.
Building Mark Brad?
Uh no, it's not news since, since last week. Uh I'll go with that.
Okay. Town announcements. Anything from the public?
I would like to say, um I got an email from Karen Junior. It was and our teacher at high school. Um it's written to us knowing about the mural on town hall. A replica of that mural is on play at the old museum.
Awesome.
Which is a testament to our art department at the high school.
Yep.
And very talented children in this town.
Yes, it is. Absolutely. Anybody else? Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I have one.
Randy, can you take the opportunity to write about your latest, uh, it's water?
I, I did not. I, I kind of did it in the workshop. Uh again, I've been there ten years. Uh we're under agreed order. Uh the wastewater plant has come along anyway. That's our first reflection and I go on the virtual website and look, I know. Uh that inspection was great. Uh they complimented, record G and B maintenance, uh everything, yeah. So again, that goes about to point Justin and myself. So refined, has been running great.
Yeah, it's been good. There's a lot of assets.
Yes.
Even one, yeah, I think.
It is, uh. The beginning, if you understood the history of where we started, the room where it's a huge, huge barrier.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations on that. Congratulations.
Right now.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to just take an opportunity uh to thank Randy and his crew. They're out twenty-four seven. Uh they are at least on call twenty-four seven and they're often called on holidays. They're often called um after hours. Lots of people think they work with nine to five, but that's not necessarily the case. They're out in great conditions. Those same congratulations and gratitude to the police department, the fire department, and anybody else who goes above and beyond to protect people. Uh you know, we're all very, very grateful to all of you. We hope that the uh the increase in the salaries is something that uh that everyone will uh will feel and uh know that we care very much about them. So.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
I think we could add uh the town council crew or the uh town hall crew into that too. I know Jamie and her group did a lot. Got us through some couple of rough years here with what uh what you were left with.
Absolutely. It's uh, it's back in shape and looking good. So thank you, Jamie, and everybody that's worked so hard there. Brett, also thank you for uh all of the time in which you put in and uh all of the calls to answer. And thank you for all of the volunteers that come out and fill up any boards. Not getting rich off of that, so thank you all and everybody else who helps the town. Anything else? Motion adjourned.
Make a move to adjourn, Governor.
Thank you, Justin.
Well, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we gotta do a roll call at the end?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
I vote aye. Thank you, everybody.
Take it, buddy.
A great trip.
Thanks.
Yeah.